Good afternoon and welcome to the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee. It's eighteenth day of April twenty twenty three. I note councillor, sorry, Mayor Harding and councillor Milligan are present. We have a request to attend via audio link for councillor Nicole Johnic. And the request that the attendance is in accordance with section two five four of the Local Government Act two thousand and twelve and nine point six point two of council's meetings and procedure policy. Councillor Nicole Johnic be permitted to participate in the meeting via audio leak. Somebody like to move that? Thank you councillor Milligan and a seconder. Thank you Mayor Harding. We'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, noting it's unanimous. Councillor Johnic, are you on the line?
I am.
Thank you. And we have an apology for councillor Kunsman. A leave of, requested a leave of absence be granted for councillor Kate Kunsman for the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee. Have a mover? Thank you Mayor Harding and a seconder. Thank you councillor Milligan. Put the matter to the vote. Looking around the room, that's unanimous councillor Johnic.
Affirmative.
Thank you, unanimous and carried. I'll move to the acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land upon which we meet. We pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, cultures and stories of proud people. Do we have any declarations of interests in matters on the agenda today? No councillor Johnic?
No.
No, thank you. There is nil business outstanding. So we'll move on to item number one, which is confirmation of the minutes of the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee from the ninth of March twenty twenty three. Can I have a mover? Thank you councillor Milligan and a seconder. Thank you Mayor Harding. Any discussion? No. We'll put the matter to the vote, all those in favour, noting it's unanimous in the room. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you, unanimous and carried. Moving on to item number two, which is the first of the officers' reports. And that's a report concerning the brand and activation activity undertaken and planned for Nicholas Street precinct in in March twenty twenty three. Could I have the relevant council officer to the lectern please? Thank you, can you please confirm your name?
Karen Sutton, brand and activation manager for the Nicholas Street precinct.
Thank you, Miss Sutton. We, the precinct has been extremely busy of late with a number of activations. I was working at the markets and and Cocomelon was a big hit.
It was amazing, yep.
How many, how many visitors did we have on the day?
So the activation took place from, for about for six days, from Saturday through to Thursday. And we had over thirty thousand people attend.
Thirty?
Thirty thousand people come, we had two shows daily. We had a climbing wall for the bigger kids, numerous food trucks and just different activations.
Okay, and and great job on the activation. Were there any issues coming out of such a large crowd around security?
No, it was actually very well, very well received. We've learnt, you know, to have medics available. We have station, different stations for lost property, for example, things like that. And just really try to guide our visitors on the play of the day, what times things are on. So actually, there was no, nothing, no, nothing to alert.
Okay, great.
I run out of breath.
Any other questions? Thank you Mayor Harding.
If I may, just look at the April events that are coming up. But obviously you've got the Akadaka tribute show just the night before the park and pose.
And cultural.
Do you mind going through, it's obviously our first time of having a park and pose. What will be happening and what's the layout?
Yeah, absolutely.
Very closely with a chair on this.
Definitely, yes. So we have a great weekend plan. We actually start the Friday night with our Tunes in Torma event. We have the Australian Superbike Championships coming that evening as well to do a bit of a meet and greet. And as mentioned, we've got Cold Chisel cover band as well, so a bit of K-Sun. And then we have the following Saturday night, we have the Ipswich Classic and Muscle Car Club joining us. They have about twenty vehicles that they're going to bring into Nicholas Street. Position them along the street, the street will be closed for that evening. And it's just an opportunity to get up close with the owners of those vehicles. We'll have them all displayed. We have a selection of food trucks as well, just a small selection. And some live music, just to lighten the mood as well, so a great opportunity to come in and meet with the owners.
How many cars could we take there with with food trucks being there? Because there might be some people who also wish to put their cars there in the future.
Yeah, absolutely. So at this stage, we've got between sixteen to twenty. And that's based on the, the availability of those cars that wish to join that evening.
Okay, thank you. And thank you Chair, I know you've done a lot of work in this particular area, especially with the lappers and so on.
Thank you, thank you Mayor. Just looking for any opportunity to activate and and scream to the world, let everyone know what we've been doing down here in the precinct. Really, really proud and excited, but thank you to the team for working very closely with our festivals team to pull that one together.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. The recommendation that the Nicholas Street precinct communications engagement and events monthly monthly report be received and the contents noted. I will move that, could I have a seconder please? Thank you councillor Milligan. Any further discussion?
Chair, yeah, I would just like to add and further highlight that those attendance numbers are just outstanding, incredible. I do have to admit, look, I know about dash ons, but that's the long and the short of it, boom boom. Cocomelon, I had to do do my research, so through my family, of course, my granddaughter's nineteen months, so I clearly seen it and tripped over it, stood on it barefoot, but with the, some of the toys, but that that is, you know, something that is an amazing drawcard. And particularly at the time, I do note that around the similar time, we had those performers that were different coloured skivvies.
Oh, the Wiggles?
Yes.
Yeah, Wiggles were the same.
At the, at the civic centre at the same time, so great time to be a kid. Yeah, I just wanted to highlight further those, that the activation clearly is a success and and working well.
Yeah, delighted, the team are working really hard to make the activations really relevant and promote them and so that they're well attended and and they've absolutely been achieving that, so just delighted with what they've been achieving. And yes, councillor Fittner and I worked the market, so we were right outside the lift and watching all the little people come out in the yellow and red skivvies. I don't think, the the timing aligned obviously with the Cocomelon performance with with the Wiggles attending the civic centre for their performance. I don't think it was deliberate, but it was lovely to see. And and this is what Torma Place has been about, the civic space, you know. A lot of the drivers behind it, as well as the children's library, it's about family in Ipswich, so delighted. Everyone's embracing it and and using it as it as it should, should be used, yeah. Thank you, May.
Thank you, I was, I didn't plan to watch Cocomelon, but I was there with the colleges crossing pop up there. We were doing the community consultation there, so obviously saw Cocomelon. It was great to see the the numbers there, but also we're getting significant numbers on the weekends, so. Yeah, and so I know that means that there's more people here for Top of Town as well as Riverlink. We know, we can see people walking across the the bridge to Riverlink as well, so I think it's been a terrific force multiplier for us, for our CBD and all of Ipswich Central.
Absolutely, the wider benefits for Ipswich Central are just enormous. And and you do see that pedestrian traffic moving about and and the more residents from wider Ipswich we get into these events to actually see what we've achieved here. I'm still surprised that there are some people that that aren't aware of, you know, the construction that's taken place in Nicholas Street precinct. But that's, obviously, we're a very large city these days, very different to what we used to be and.
I think the other day I was there, I was, I think after the Cocomelon show, there was a, a meet and greet afterwards, after the show. And I think during that process, they get the the postcode of where people are from, so there was a significant number of people who are actually, I think over half actually for that day were not from Ipswich, you know, they were, so they were coming here and they were spending money here, so it's great.
It's fantastic, we are a regular feature in the Brisbane news, our Brisbane Kids newspaper for ideas and options to do on weekends and during school holidays, so, yeah, it's fantastic. The new place to be for families, live, work and play. Okay, if there's nothing further, we'll put the matter to the vote. All those in favour, looking around the room, that's unanimous councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you, noting that's unanimous and carried. Moving on to item three, which is the second of the officers' reports. And this is the report concerning the February twenty twenty three retail sub project steering committee focusing on the status of the leasing programme and associated developments with the retail component of the Nicholas Street precinct redevelopment. Could I ask the relevant council officer to come up to the lectern please? Thank you, could you just state your name please?
I'm James Hepburn, I'm the precinct director for Nicholas Street precinct.
Thank you, Mr Hepburn. Obviously, our latest tendency to open in Nicholas Street precinct sushi is just a wonderful achievement. What's next?
Yeah, what's next? Well, they reported this morning that they had a fantastic lunch serving yesterday and were really surprised by the sales, so it's good news for their, for their launch. What's next is that we have Bum Bum Bow, the Vietnamese, that should be opening in about four to six weeks' time. And they're busily fitting out behind the hoardings, a bit, just two shops down from where the sushi Ohio offer is at the moment. So that will be essentially next door to where Zambbrero is, as you're looking at from this building. They're making good progress in there. We're just delayed a little bit because they're waiting for shop fronts to come from China, which is a lot of glass and and the framing that sits around that. But we're hopeful in the next four to six weeks, we'll have another opening there. Following that will be Othesetica, which is the the beauty treatment offer, which will sit inside the mall, actually almost directly opposite where Bum Bum Bow and Zambbrero are. I popped in there this morning, they are very busily framing up all the different beauty areas, which we've got, you can see eight quite clearly appearing with the front of house and reception area. So we're, hopefully again, that won't be too many weeks after, after Bum Bum Bow. But we'll just wait to see how that progresses over the next couple of weeks.
Can I just ask, a deliberate part of our strategy with regard to Nicholas Street precinct and and activation has included the use of food food trucks. As we move forward with our leasing programme and we're, we're getting a lot more food offerings opening, will we at some point move to no food trucks? What what do you envision the way forward, balancing, you know, our bricks and mortar and supporting them?
Yeah, I think it is a careful balance. We we need to support the events and activations that we are hosting and allow Torma Place to grow and become its own place within the city. You take the activations of Easter and the thirty thousand attendees, you know. There are not enough food and beverage outlets in the city centre to cope with that number of people, so it's good to start looking at a diversity of offer. And it gives us a chance to see also what what's, what's hot and what's not in terms of local demand. But certainly, as more and more restaurant offers and retail service offers open, not just within Nicholas Street precinct, but within other third party land ownerships and other local businesses, we'll most certainly see a number of the, I think the food fans probably just drop away a little bit. But I think it really depends on what the activation and and event schedule is doing.
Yeah. In the current economic climate, we're seeing families impacted significantly on on the disposable income and monies that they could perhaps use on on eating out. Are we seeing any impacts on our tenants, those that have been operating for a little while now?
On the ones we've got open currently, no, they, I think they're all reasonably priced. There aren't what I would call a sort of luxury offer at the moment, it's, it's sitting in that sort of mid to low range of affordability. Stella Rossa have actually seen their sales in the last month, you know, really greatly improve. And it looks like they've really nicely settled into into their environment within the city. And that dumpling has also settled quite well recently and and their sales continue to to impress. And then Gelatismo has been the standout winner in that space and and we see that not changing for the foreseeable future. And with the the other tenants incoming, if we take Bum Bum Bow, for instance, I think that price point's going to be very similar to that dumpling and and sushi higher.
And venue, construction, how are we doing?
Yeah, it's, it's, as I think we reported this time last month, the the venue building has been full of some problematic latent conditions. The Hutchinson builders are slowly but surely getting their heads around those and overcoming them. And we're now just waiting for probably about the next two weeks to to get an understanding of where their programme is at and where some of the cost sits within that as well.
And just to clarify, when you talk about latent conditions, are you able to speak publicly to that?
Yeah, I can describe some of them, I think I probably did this this time last month as well. But some of the big ones that have come through have been, there's been a collapsed sewer that sat underneath the concrete slab that that they were unaware of. We have had a mould issue sat within all of the different cinema boxes, which actually takes very careful removal. It's essentially treated as a biohazard, so so that's going to be quite a lengthy process to to remove that. There have been other things that generally relate back to a building that has been cut and carved up over the last thirty or forty years as it's gone through different life cycles from a department store to Harvey Norman to a vaccination centre and now back into a cinema. So some of the structure is not what it should be. Some of the the ducting and and the roofing and certainly other parts of the building are probably not ideal. And we're having to go back and rectify some of those things.
Some of the works to date have been a little noisy, particularly for some of our local businesses on Ellenborough Street. Are we through the the most significant part of demolition works, I guess, that was creating that noise, would you say?
We, we hoped we were. I think we would wait to see what the methodology says around the removal of the cinema screen, the the cinema mould issue. And there's going to be some demolition there, there's some block wall, there's some plasterboard that will need to come out. It will probably come out in small chunks and be be treated very carefully within, on site before it's then removed, as of course it, it's contaminated with mould. But unsure in terms of the, probably the equipment and the machinery required to do that. So perhaps we can take that on on notice and and come back with a, an update on on what the noise levels will look like over the coming months.
That would be great, and and if we can add to that, I'm, you know, very aware that our contracts with Hutchinson's builders, obviously, they control the site and you know, I think there is an obligation, absolutely an obligation on them to be working with local, you know, impacted business, businesses and property owners. So I completely understand that, but within, you know, local government, Ipswich City Council, there is an obligation on us for our rate payers as well, who within council is managing the stakeholder engagement, making sure that local businesses and property owners that may be impacted by noise or other issues impacting amenity, who is there, is there somebody within council that's working closely?
It's twofold, the owners is contractually on Hutchies to manage that directly with a lot of the neighbouring stakeholders. But we use the information flow from them through our project management arm of Savills and back through myself and Karen and and events and activation to to do mail shots to the local businesses and and the Nicholas Street tenants. And generally, make sure that we're backing up the Hutchies' interaction to to keep as many people abreast of what's going on.
Yeah, thank you.
I think with the change in programme, there'll be a need to go back and do that again.
Communication with our our residents and our local impacted businesses must always remain front and centre. Mayor, did you have questions for Mr Hepburn? No, I think that, that's, oh, I did, I'm asked, and I, and I know we've had this discussion regularly. When do we get to see some pretty pictures and and plans for for venue, what's planned in there besides hoits? What are likely to see?
So yesterday afternoon, we had a suite of documents come back from our architectural renders. And they're all pretty exciting, we're just as a team just going through them now and just making sure they've got the right colours and doorknobs and balustrades and glass and signage all in the right place, and then we'll And then we'll circulate them slightly wider within the council for, for review. And then hopefully they'll be leading within the new leasing campaign for the venue building in a couple of weeks' time. So hopefully for this, this time next month perhaps, we'll have something good to show.
Great. Thank you.
Pleasure.
So the recommendation is that the February twenty twenty three Retail Subproject Steering Committee report be received and the contents noted. Do I have a mover for that? Thank you councillor Milligan and a seconder, thank you Mayor Harding, any discussion? Thank you Mayor.
I think, well, obviously it's great having sushi, you know, open up yesterday. And when I went in there for lunch, I think most people there were from this building, from council, I guess. That's one of the advantages of if you open up, you know, something here in Nicholas Street precinct, that you've got over seven hundred council workers here that are, you know, already, already customers for those venues. So it was really great to see that they've been, been so successful the last two days.
Yeah, I, I agree, it was great to finally see sushi open, who doesn't love sushi these days? So yeah, everyone's been really looking forward to that. And as you pointed out, the pedestrian traffic, the office workers are so important and you know, to, to support our local offerings in the precinct. And I know there's discussions underway and hopefully we'll see another one or two large employers move in to the precinct. And we're also seeing others move, other businesses move into the privately owned properties within Nicholas Street. So that's been fantastic to see as well, all adding to the increased pedestrian numbers, it's great to see. Okay. We will put the matter to the vote if there's nothing else, all those in favour, looking around the room, that's unanimous councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you, noting that's unanimous and carried. So that brings us to the end, we have no notices of motion and no matters arising. And meeting is closed at one twenty two PM, thank you.